Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Annual Awards Evening. We're delighted to be here this evening. We have two students who represent the entire student body of over 3,500 students at the Board of Education table. They enter into discussion and give some pretty insightful input to our board when they're making decisions. One of those people is to my left, this is Olivia Whitehead, and she has been on our board for one year. One year and very, very active on our board, and we're delighted. And she is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you would all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Olivia, and I hate to say this, but if you will please remain standing. It's good to keep your blood going in this. You will now be amazed and humbled with one of our 12th grade students, Kirby Staley, who is now going to sing "The Star-Spangled Banner." Kirby?
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light Was so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Or the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming At rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, Cave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave!
Thank you so much, Kirby. We are so proud to have one of our own students perform for us in that manner. A song, an anthem that is so close to our hearts. Without much further ado, I will begin the program. We have many awards. If you've thumbed through the program, you can see. This is the board's opportunity to honor students who excel in areas that are not the normal academic areas for some. These are special programs. We're talking about art and music and excelling in world languages, excelling in creative writing, our VOAG program. So these are all our stars that we love to see come out. And so we are absolutely delighted, and the board is so proud of each student and all of their accomplishments. We have several special awards right at the beginning of our program, and I would like to ask Alicia Bisck and her parents to come forward, please, and Mr. Hool, our board chair. I'll introduce the board members as we go through. Each of them has got a role in this evening's program. Alicia was chosen as one of three seniors in the state of Connecticut to receive the Hood Sportsmanship Scholarship. This is quite an honor for us. She competed nationally for this honor. She was honored at Gillette Stadium, where our Patriots play, and she's been entered into the Hood Sportsmanship Hall of Fame. She's a four-year volleyball player, captain of the varsity team, and we are very, very honored to honor her here this evening. Ms. Bisck. Thank you. Erin Delubak and Ryan Fujimoto, please come forward, and their parents as well. Annually, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, which is CAE, presents Student Leadership Awards. These awards come forward from the high school faculty. These are 12th grade students, and they're for a variety of reasons that you will see that students come forward. They are stellar students, they excel in a number of different manners and a number of different areas. Erin Delubak has earned high honors every quarter in her high school career. She's a member of the National Honor Society, a member of our AG Ed program, and she's received an incredible number of academic awards, Future Farmers of America awards, and many, many other awards, and they're in your program. She's also a peer minister at her church. She is on the mathematics team, the indoor and outdoor track teams, cross-country, the national Future Farmers of America organization, and she volunteers her time in a number of associations. The American Brain Tumor Association, an equine summer camp at the Bolton Veterinary Hospital, and at her church as well as a food pantry. Erin is one of our seniors. We are delighted to have her receive the CAE Student Leadership Award. Ryan Fujimoto is an all-around student. He excels in many things. He has incredible leadership qualities. He has constantly earned above-average grades being involved in various clubs and activities. He's a drum major, and if you've ever seen him on the field, you know what leadership skills that takes. He's a motivator, a leader, and a cheerleader for his peers throughout football games, parades, competitions. His leadership qualities give him the ability to positively influence those around him, and that's what we want for all of our students. So we're very proud to have Ryan, one of our own. Congratulations, Ryan. Thank you, Mr. Hool. Mr. Hool is our chair, the board chair. Mrs. Laura Bush is the secretary. If you would come forward, please, and Mr. Phelps. Mr. Phelps here this evening, there he is. And those members of the BCR hockey team. Do we have any of our members here? This year, our hockey team was reformulated. We had previously had partnerships with Stafford and Manchester, and our numbers started dwindling. So a little over a year ago, we started trying to figure out how we could get a hockey team that we had enough players to compete and to be a competitive team. And Bolton and Coventry had enough players with Rockville. We actually have one player, I think, from Lyman Hall, if I recall, who joined together to create the new BCR, which are the letters across the jerseys, hockey team. So this team made its first appearance in the South Division of the Triple C Boys Ice Hockey Tournament, and they won. So they are the division champs, the conference champs. They did participate in state tournament as well and did not go quite as far, but we see great things coming from this team. We are very, very proud of them. I would like to name them Seth Alexandra Derwitz, Zach Beers, Brian Becker, Daylon Carnelli, Bradley Gale, Daniel Hansen, Jarrett Coretti, Brendan Shannon. We have our managers here, and our coaches here as well. We expect great things next year. You've only begun. I'd like to ask Mrs. Yanna Fisher to the stage, please. And Mrs. Fisher is the vice chair of our Board of Education, and Mrs. Jill Goldberg. And I'll call the following students and their awards, and if they would come forward. Some of you have received several awards, is my understanding. Olivia Tani, Kirby Staley, and just come forward, please. Shannon Knapp, Jacqueline Lamaro, Olivia Shay Cavallari, Megan Gardner, Heather Busquet, Mallory Shabra, Cameron Marciano, Gabrielle Rogan, Wendellin Vartanian, Julianne Colapi, and Justin Lebrun. Olivia Tani has received in grade 12 an award in visual arts, a gold award for portfolio in ceramics and sculpture, a gold in portfolio for Ceramics and Sculpture Scholarship Award to the Hartford Art School. Kirby Staley has received in grade 12 is the Connecticut Association of Schools Art Award in Music. And is Kirby still there? Yes, there we go. Shannon Knapp, in grade 8, received a place award in sculpture. Jacqueline Lamaro in silver key in ceramics. Shay Cavallari in grade 10, a gold award in ceramics. Megan Gardner, a place award in sculpture. Heather Busquet, a gold award, Best in Comic Art Award. Additionally, a silver in digital art, a gold in drawing, another gold in drawing, another silver in drawing. Mallory Shabra, a gold in comic art. Cameron Marciano, a place in comic art. Gabrielle Rogan, a gold in digital art and photography. Wendellin Vartanian, place in drawing. Julianne Colapi, a place in drawing. And Justin Lebrun, a silver in photography. There were over 20 awards won by half as number, the number of students. The art department is just formidable in our district, K-12. If you haven't gone to our annual arts festival in March, please put it on your calendars for next year. I'm sure it'll start the first week in March and go throughout the month, and it is a marvelous, marvelous event. Congratulations, students. We also have fine arts recognition for the elementary schools. I'm going to ask each of the board members who is a liaison to a particular elementary school to give out those awards. The first school is Center Road School. Would Jordan Kermode, Jackson Kermode, and Ashley Fisher, please come forward? Jordan Kermode received an award in visual arts. Jackson Kermode received an award in visual arts, and Ashley Fisher in performing arts. Congratulations. Ben McCollum and Benjamin Chassez, please come forward, and Mr. Hool, who's the representative, will take Mrs. Fisher's place. Thank you. Ben McCollum, in grade 5 at Lake Street School, received an award in visual arts, and Benjamin Chassez received an award in performing arts. Ms. Goldberg, if you would represent Maple Street School, please. Mariah Pelletier and Gabriel Miles. Mariah Pelletier, a fifth grader at Maple Street School, is receiving an award in visual arts. Gabriel Miles in performing arts. Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Ms. Arn for Northeast School, please. Would Gage Cormier and Chelsea Cos, please come forward? Gage Cormier is receiving an award in visual arts, and Chelsea Cos, who is with us here, was receiving an award in performing arts for Ms. Arn. Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Arn. Mr. Nicholson for Skinner Road School. Would Robert Hare and Morgan Pitkin, please come forward? Robert Hare's award is in visual arts, and Morgan Pitkin, who is here with us this evening, is receiving an award in performing arts. Congratulations. Mr. Kemp, if you would come forward for the next group of awards, please. These fine arts recognitions are for students who have met the qualifications to become a member of the Connecticut Eastern Region Music Festival. It is an audition-only festival. And then we have someone who is in the State Music Festival, and then the Eastern United States Division Honors Band Invitation. So I'm going to, I'll have some students come up at a time. Would Marissa McKee, Sophia Bleek, Emily Harrison, Tiffany Cosgrove, Alexandra Oss, Sophia Becker, and Morgan Baldock, please come forward? Would you line up against the stage, and then Mr. Kemp can, with Mrs. Goldberg, can help you. Marissa McKee received an award in band for clarinet. Sophia Bleek, in orchestra for violin. Emily Harrison, orchestra for flute. Tiffany Cosgrove in chorus. Alexandra Oss, chorus. Sophia Becker, chorus. And Morgan Baldock, chorus. These students are all eighth graders at Vernon Center Middle School, so with eight people making Eastern Regions, you can imagine that our music program has a lot to look forward to over the next few years. Congratulations. Thank you, students. Would they come forward, please? Brian Bleek, Caleb Brownell, Maria Meyer, Peter Malander, Rachel Nutt, Jacqueline Oss, Olivia Whitehead. Brian Bleek received an award in orchestra for violin. Caleb Brownell in band for trumpet. Maria Meyer, band for flute. Peter Malander, orchestra for French horn. Rachel Nutt, band for trombone. Jacqueline Oss, band for alto saxophone. And Olivia Whitehead, band for baritone saxophone. Congratulations. The following students made all Eastern, or excuse me, Eastern Regional in chorus. Would they come forward, please? Erin Brownell, Ciara Buckley, Sarah Clark, Tatiana Dimofsky, Marissa Fujimoto, Ryan Fujimoto, Abraham Cod, Christiane Lee, Sabrina Layton, Dominique Moore, Jennifer Mueller, Kirby Staley, and Jenna Sunderland. And all of these students received the award in chorus. Congratulations. Thank you. Two very special awards. Kirby Staley, whom you heard earlier, for chorus, the Connecticut All-State Music Festival. Congratulations, Kirby. And Peter Malander, the Eastern United States Division Honors Band. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Hool and Mrs. Vidjashaker, if you would come up. Thank you, Mrs. Goldberg. The following awards are World Language Student Awards. These are awards, students take exams for these. They are national exams, and so they place both in the state and nationally, and you'll see their placements in the, in the program here. We're very, very pleased for them. In French, two of the following students would come forward. Manaine Adoi, Renee Rogan, Brianna Markounas, Madison Beach, Matthew Roy, Mohamed Al-Tahawi. Those five students, if you could come forward. Thank you. Manaine Adoi placed fifth in the state and fifth in the nation. Renee Rogan, ninth in the state and ninth in the nation. Brianna Markounas, 12th in the state and 12th in the nation. Madison Beach, 14th in the state and 12th in the nation. Matthew Roy placed 19th in the state and 12th in the nation. Mohamed Al-Tahawi placed 25th in the state and 12th in the nation. And we are so proud of them. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Congratulations. In French, four, Emily Sullivan, Brian Bleek, Gabrielle Rogan, please come forward. We also have Katia Rouska, Matthew Bilms, Atsi Barasov, Peter Malander, and Kiara Rouska. Emily Sullivan, in French, four, placed fourth in the state and 10th in the nation. Brian Bleek, 13th in the state and 19th in the nation. Gabrielle Rogan placed 23rd in the state and 29th in the nation. Brian Bleek also received the Robert McFarland Book Award for Excellence in French, given by the Alliance Française of Hartford. Katia Rouska has received Premio Plata, the silver prize for her performance, and this is the national Spanish exam. Matthew Bilms, Atsi Barasov, Peter Malander, and Kiara Rouska also all received honorable mention for their national Spanish exam. Congratulations. Mr. Percy is the board's liaison to the Vernon Center Middle School, and the following students are receiving an award from the Connecticut, the Council of Language Teachers in Connecticut, and if they would come forward. Alana Andreoli, Ashley Kavar, Chelsea Chatterton, Jake Seashawn, Megan Hasty, Joyce Keeta, Lauren Honan, Hannah Johnston, Megan Lee. Let's start there. Would the following DCMS students, please come forward. Ian McCullough, Julia Paget, Hannah Ramsdale, Tanya Roy, Kylie Santos, Sarah Silver, Julian Congratulations. Mr. Amarji Bhutar is the board's liaison to Rockville High School. Mr. Bhutar, if you would come forward, please. And with the following students, please come forward. Madison Beach, Atsi Barasov, Erin Brownell, Brian Chisnowski, Brianna Flint, Joy Holder, Lee Cool, Tyler Johnson, Brianna Markounas, and Maria Meyer. These students, and the ones that I'll name in a moment, are, also received the Connecticut Council of Language Teachers Award for Excellence. Thank you. The following students, please come forward. Peter Malander, Lisa Mueller, Jacqueline Oss, Jacob Ott, Chris Rosha, Gabrielle Rogan, These students also received the Connecticut Council of Language Teachers Award for Excellence, and we congratulate them. Ms. Arn, if you would join the podium, please. And Ms. Nordland. Ms. Victoria Norgren is the, Nordland, excuse me, is the English Department Chair and is our creative writing teacher, extraordinary. She has gotten her students this year to win 95 awards. That is more than any of the private, private schools such as Kingswood, Oxford, Chautauqua Mary Hall, Lewis J. P. None of those schools were able to match what Rockville High School did. It is, is quite a phenomenal program. They will be receiving, they will be receiving medals as well as their certificates. Like the first six students to come up, please. Whitney Ajuman, Catherine Bartol, Matthew Bilms, Brian Bleek, Julia Benetti, sorry about that, and Emily Berg. And you'll have to bear with me, I think reading their awards really sends a message home to other students, families, and to any of our younger students who are here so that they can aspire to also try to get a seat in any of Ms. Nordland... that they can aspire to also try to get a seat in any of Mrs. Nordland's classes. Whitney Ajuman, grade 10, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Poetry. Catherine Bartol, grade 11, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Poetry. Honorable mention in Memoir. And Connecticut Student Writer Magazine, honorable mention in Memoir. Matthew Bilms, grade 11, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, Silver Key in Short Story, and he won two of those. Brian Bleek, grade 11, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, Silver Key in Short Story, and he won two of those as well. Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Poetry, and the National Council of Teachers of English Contest winner. Julia Benades, grade 11, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Poetry, and she won for three different entries. Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Memoir, and she's published in the Connecticut Student Writer Magazine. And Emily Berg, grade 11, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Short Story, and honorable mention in Flash Fiction. Kelly Butterfield, Megan Shabro, Jessie Cohen, Marissa Fujimoto, Hannah Gerhard, and Erin Gagnier, please come to the podium. Kelly Butterfield, in grade 11, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Short Story, and there are two of those. Sorry about that. Megan Shabro, in grade 12, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, Silver Key in Poetry, Silver Key in Poetry Portfolio, and honorable mention in Poetry. Additionally, the Edith Wharton Writing Contest, honorable mention in Poetry. Jessie Cohen, grade 12, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, Gold Key in Flash Fiction, Silver Key in Portfolio, and honorable mention in Flash Fiction. Marissa Fujimoto, grade 12, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, Silver Key in Poetry, honorable mention in Poetry, and she received that award for two different entries. Hannah Gerhard, grade 12, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, Gold Key in Poetry, and she won that for two different entries, and a gold medal in poetry, as well as a silver medal in poetry. She's published in the Connecticut Student Writer Magazine and a Connecticut Young Writers' State Finalist. Erin Gagnier, in grade 10, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, honorable mention for Poetry, and she is published in the Connecticut Student Writer Magazine. Thank you, Mrs. Arn. Ms. Goldish? Allison Gunther, Haley Hasty, Allison Holly, Sora Kim, Christiane Lee, and Timothy Lyons. Allison Gunther, grade 12, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Poetry, Silver Key in Short Story. Connecticut Student Writer, honorable mention in Poetry. Eugene O'Neil, Playwriting Contest, Top Finalist. Haley Hasty, grade 10, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, Silver Key for Short Story, Silver Key for Flash Fiction. And Haley is, how did you do today?
I did okay. I got 12.
That's 12th in the state, in the state track, open track beat. Congratulations. A woman of many, many strengths. Allison Holly, grade 12, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, Gold Key in Flash Fiction, Silver Key in Poetry Portfolio, honorable mention in the Drexel Playwriting Competition, and honorable mention in the Amistad Freedom Writing Competition. Sora Kim, in grade 12, Scholastic Art and Writing, honorable mention in Prose. Christiane Lee, grade 12, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, Gold Key in Poetry, Silver Key in Poetry, Silver Key in Short Story, honorable mention in Poetry, and she received that three times. And the Edith Wharton Writing Competition, honorable mention in Short Story. She was selected to the New England Young Writers Conference at Middlebury College, published in the Connecticut Student Writer Magazine, a finalist in the Fresh New Voices' Sunken Garden Poetry Contest, Connecticut Young Writers State Finalist, and published in the Aerie International Journal. And Timothy Lee, in grade 11, Scholastic Art and Writing, honorable mention in Prose, and published in the Connecticut Student Writer Short Story. Timothy Lyons. I apologize. Thank you, students. Megan McCollum, Lisa Mueller, Nicholas Murray, Rachel Nutt, Jacqueline Oss, and Deanna Pellegrino. Megan McCollum, grade 12, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Short Story, and honorable mention in Poem. Lisa Mueller, grade 12, published in National Poetry Quarterly, published in Long River Run, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, Silver Key Portfolio, Silver Key in Poetry, honorable mention in Poetry, honorable mention in Play, and Eugene O'Neil, Young Playwright Festival, Top Finalist. Nicholas Murray, grade 11, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, Silver Key Flash Fiction, honorable mention Flash Fiction, and honorable mention in Poetry. Rachel Nutt, grade 12, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Poetry, and she received four honorable mentions in poetry. Honorable mention in Short Story, honorable mention in Portfolio, Gold Key in Flash Fiction, Gold Medal in Flash Fiction, the Virginia Dane Writing Contest, honorable mention in Poetry, Connecticut Student Writer, honorable mention in Short Story, Wallace Stevens' ECE Poetry Prize, second place in Poetry, Edith Wharton Writing Competition, second place in Poetry, and the Sunken Garden Fresh New Voices' Finalist in Poetry. Jacqueline Oss, grade 11, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, Gold Key Poetry, she received two of those, Gold Key Short Story, a Silver Key in Short Story, and an honorable mention in Flash Fiction, and the National Council of Teachers of English nomination. She received an award from them as well. Deanna Pellegrino, grade 10, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, Gold Key Short Story, a Silver Key in Poem, and published in the Connecticut Student Writer Magazine. Jonathan Pelletier, oh, thank you very much, Ms. Goldish. And Mr. Nicholson, if you would join us again. Thank you. Jonathan Pelletier, Danielle Grini, Shayla Schonberger, Trevor Siders, Lauren Silver, Connor Slope, Ashley Starrett. You've seen what they have on their T-shirts. I see. Would you like to read what you have on your T-shirt?
I am, therefore I write.
No.
No.
I write, therefore I am.
I can't read.
It's all right. Jonathan, I think Ms. Nordland would feel that way, though. I am, so I write. That's the essential. Isn't that right? Jonathan Pelletier, grade 11, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Poetry. Danielle Grini, grade 12, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, Silver Key Science Fiction, Silver Key Short Story, and published in Connecticut Student Writer Magazine. Shayla Schonberger, grade 12, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, Gold Key Poetry, honorable mention for the Drexel Playwriting Contest, and selected to attend the New England Young Writers Conference at Middlebury College. Trevor Siders, grade 10, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, Gold Key Poem, honorable mention in Poem, and published in the Connecticut Student Writer Magazine. Lauren Silver, grade 12, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, Silver Key Poetry, honorable mention, three of them, in poetry, published in Connecticut Student Writer, honorable mention in Connecticut Student Writer, and honorable mention in Drexel Playwriting Competition. Connor Slope, grade 11, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Poetry, two honorable mentions in poetry, Connecticut Student Writer Contest, honorable mention in Poetry, and Connecticut Young Writers State Finalist. Ashley Starrett, grade 10, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Poetry, and published in Connecticut Student Writer Magazine, 10th grade winner. Emily Sullivan, Alexis Debsiri, Nicholas Thierfeldt, and Courtney West, and Olivia Whitehead. Sorry, and Steve Ucello. I can't read my notes. I apologize. Ashley Starrett, grade 10, Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Poetry, and published in Connecticut Student Writer Magazine, 10th grade winner. I just did Ashley. Sorry about that. Emily Sullivan, grade 12, Drexel Playwriting Contest, second place, second place in the Edith Wharton Fiction 11th and 12th Grade Contest. Scholastic Art and Writing Contest, Silver Key Portfolio, Silver Key Short Story, and Gold Key in Poetry. Alexis Debsiri, grade 11, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Flash Fiction. Nicholas Thierfeldt, grade 12, Scholastic Art and Writing, Silver Key in Dramatic Script, honorable mention in Short Story, and honorable mention in Drexel Playwriting Competition. Steve Ucello, published in the Aerie International Journal, and Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, honorable mention in Poetry. Olivia Whitehead, grade 11, Scholastic Arts and Writing Contest, Silver Key Short Story, and honorable mention in Flash Fiction. I apologize, Courtney. You're right here. Courtney West, grade 12, honorable mention for the Drexel Playwriting Contest, and published in the Aerie International Journal. Congratulations, Courtney. Mrs. Bush? Mrs. Bush is the Board's Liaison to our Vocational Agriculture Program. And I would also ask if Mrs. Nancy Strong is in the audience? If you could come forward as well? Is Mrs. Strong here this evening? Mrs. Strong, if you know, is a member of the Strong family, the Strong Family Farm, that's right near the police station, and they're very involved in our Vocational Agriculture Program. And as, but as Liaison, Mrs. Bush will be very happy to award these seniors. The Vocational Agriculture Program is a program that is very complex. It's a magnet school right within our school. Students are involved at the national and state level, as well as at the school, our school level. They take classes in our regular high school, as well as classes in our Vocational Agricultural Center, which is attached to our building. They take classes in such things as public speaking, and they do incredible, huge, independent projects. And we're just, we're so proud of these students and so amazed at what they accomplish. If the following seven, these are our seniors this year, if they would come forward, we would be very, very honored to present them with a certificate. Jamie Vazini, Sylvia Danowski, Erin Delubak, Olivia Frankeline, Joseph Kratsky, Jessica Petridis, and Kalen Violet. Mrs. Courtney Mueller here? This evening? No, she's not. Okay. Thank you very much. Congratulations, students. The Vernon Board of Education truly delights in an evening such as this, where they get to see the results of all of their hard labors. You know that their job is a 100% volunteer job. I always joke that I'm going to give them a raise, double their salary. And they, they work so very hard. They are out several nights a week, not just several nights a month. And they are supporting students in this district, and education in this district, and the town. And we want to thank them. If you wouldn't join me, please, and a round of applause to thank them. But this is a night they enjoy. They get to see the results of all of that hard work and see how wonderful our students are doing. So I do thank you and congratulate you, all of our families. Congratulations. Thank you so much for bringing your students this evening and for getting them to this point. We only have a small part in their lives, and so we thank you for doing your part. There are refreshments in the hallway, if you would like to join us there, and I'm sure Board members will be anxious to congratulate you. Thank you.